Well, good evening. This is a Greenbelt City Council work session. My name's Emmett Jordan. I serve as mayor, council.
Tristan Weaver, Mayor Protem.
St. John Pope Council.
Danielle McKinney, Council.
Amy Niesel, Councilmember.
Rodney Roberts, City Council.
Oh.
Danielle McKinney, City Council.
Right, all right. So hey, any information items to be discussed at the end of the open meeting? If not, let me go ahead and just do this opening statement. We do hold council work sessions on Mondays and Wednesdays several times a month. And we do that to exchange information with community stakeholder groups, so to gather information from staff, from advisory groups, residents. No votes or formal actions are taken at work sessions. These work sessions and our meetings are open to the public, except for executive sessions as authorized by state law, so that residents and others can observe councils deliberations. We strive to provide a reasonable opportunity for the public to voice opinions on matters being considered, so we'll pause periodically for public comment. During these times, if you wish to address council or the city administration, if you're in the room, just raise your hand, and after being recognized, you can go over to the podium. You'll need to state your name and where you live, more or less. We need that for the minutes. If you're on Zoom, you can use the Q&amp;A tab to submit a written question, or you can raise your virtual hand. And once again, after being recognized, we'll promote you so that you can speak. And if you are watching on cable TV, or on YouTube, or Instagram, or Facebook, you can send us an email. And send the email to the email address questions@greenbeltmd.gov. So the remarks, limit them to three minutes as per council rules, and speak on one topic related to the question under consideration. And we ask that you avoid questioning the motives of others in general. Let's all be civil in our remarks. So tonight, we're actually getting an update from the city manager. On a quarterly basis, the city manager reports out and shares his progress on management objectives, and just gives us an overview of all the work that goes on. So tonight, Mr. Sumrun, how are you this evening?
I am doing great, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Good evening, council.
I would ask you to introduce staff who's in the room, but we've got the whole management team here in the room. But of course, our clerk, Anita Anderson, is at the table with us.
Yeah, so we have the entire senior management team here, with the exception of our Human Resources Director, Dewaye Martinez. I'll name the folks that are in the room to recognize them for the benefit of the audience. I know you all know our senior team, but our audience will probably appreciate that. Starting from my left, we have City Clerk Anita Barita Anderson, Acting IT Director, Brian Kenno, our Planning and Community Development Director, Terry Ruby, Assistant City Manager, Tim George. Behind Mr. George is Greg Varda, our Recreation Director. The gentleman in the uniform is Chief Bowers. Dr. Liz Park, our Director for CARES. Brian Kim, Acting Director of Public Works. Ms. Bertha Gaiman, Finance or Treasurer. Tyra Smith, our DEI Officer. And Shandra Andrews, our PIO Officer.
That's fantastic. Well, you know, this fall quarterly update, it just seems like things maybe slow down just a little bit over the summer, and we go through the Labor Day Festival, and now everything is back in full swing. So there's just a million things going on. And, you know, when you combine that with the American Rescue Plan funding and trying to close out the over $22 million in federal support that we received to help us as a city recover from the pandemic and catch up on deferred expenses, it's just a whole lot going on. So appreciate all of your work.
We do have a lot going on. I think the sentiment changes a bit on how we start the year. Most of us start with Big Bang, with fireworks. That's the kickoff of the busy season, and the Fourth of July celebrations, it's pretty busy for the team through the summer months with a lot of activities we have, a lot of activities, and most of our team participates in all our community events in one way or the other. We also kick off our new fiscal year and the new budget. We start working on operationalizing our MBOs and now the council framework. So I'm ready to get started when you are.
Let's dive right in.
All right, well, it's a privilege to be here again with you. I've seen several of you in the last couple of days, and I get to see all of you for a couple more times during the week. We're really excited this year. Looking at our progress and strategic advancements, we had our first staff retreat at the beginning of September, and this was specifically to look at operationalize the council framework, the new framework that council adapted as part of the FY 2025 budget. So we're looking at finding the alignment between the council goals, objectives, and the MBOs. Part of that work in executing our 2025 budget, we continue to work on the records retention policies and schedules. So the team and administrative staff throughout the organization have completed the training with Maryland State Archives. We've continued to work on the recodification effort of the city code. That's an 18-month project. We recently received an update that the process of collecting all of our legislation, that includes ordinances and resolutions, has been completed. Now the package has been sent to the legal team for legal review and cross-referencing. We've got numerous strategic projects in either planning and coordination phase that includes the numerous ARPA projects, just to list a few that we saw just at the hug walk, or the two major playgrounds, that's the Buddy Attic Park and the Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center Playground. Those two projects will be completed in the next week or two weeks. We have numerous other improvements, the bike pedestrian improvements that council recently approved. The expenditures for council will have additional items, contracts for approval at the October 28th meeting. So we look forward to executing those projects after months of planning. We also have bus stop safety improvements, police radios. Council authorized the expenditure of the first batch of radios, and as part of the ARPA allocation, has authorized the expenditures for the second set of radios. So the team are prepared to bring that contract to council at the October 28th meeting. The FBI Site Development, that's a monthly meeting. We continue to make groundwork on that. It's slow progress, and a lot of those things are outside of our control, as we can plan and plan, but until the federal government allocates the construction funds for that project, we'll be limited on what we can do with that planning process. Pepco Streetlights, I understand has been a project that you've heard about for a couple years now. I think we're near the final stages of the Pepco Streetlights issue. In your memo, sorry, in your council packets from Friday, you would receive a memo that we finalized our agreement with Pepco, and we've agreed to the credit for overbilling that the city has been incurred over the past three years. So we expect $87,000 in credits, which I spoke with the finance team. We're going to actually claim that credit upfront, and we want a check written out to the city, so we have that money deposited in our account.
You say credit, we were actually overcharged.
We were, yes, we were overcharged. So we're due an $87,000 credit, at least. And so we'll get that money back. We had two major property acquisitions, Parcel 84 and the Greenbelt Armory. Really exciting work on that front. On our communication and collaboration strategy, we continue to reach a broader audience by engaging with constituents in various communication channels. Over the last three months, which is the first quarter of the year, we added 489 new email subscribers with an impressive open rate of 56.1%. That brings our total email subscriber base to 19,681. I hope you noticed the strong engagement with our constituents. Many of you participated in many of these community events that includes community meetings and walkthroughs with the police department. Just to mention some notable activities, we've had the National Night Out, the Charleston Village Walkthrough, Franklin Park meeting, tenant meeting with Franklin Park and Greenbelt Station HOA, and that does not include the numerous other community engagement that chief and CARES do on a regular basis with the communities. Looking at our prioritization and development, the fire and EMS services continues to be a challenge. As you were aware, their summer staffing plan continues through the fall and possibly even longer. Our legal action on that matter continues. Other tangible things we did with the fire and EMS issues, we acquired the AEDs for municipal buildings and the police vehicles, and we've conducted not just AED training for staff, but also have numerous staff certified in first aid care. We continue to provide support to Berwyn Heights and Green, Greenbelt Volunteer Fire Stations for continuity of service. In the most recent letter that the Fire Chief Green sent to the municipalities, the chief Green took pride in stating that Berwyn Heights was in service every day but one day. And I attribute that, that part of that success, to the support that the city has provided to Berwyn Heights and our community. So I think that we've seen some success there. We continue to prioritize ARPA projects. We've conducted the final reallocation of funds. That is our list of priorities in which we execute the projects. I don't expect to go too far down the list from what we discussed, but that becomes the priority list. And in that allocation, we prioritize the people-first initiatives. And I put those in quotation because there's a strong law group of individuals that want to see us support our most vulnerable residents, and I'm happy that we were able to allocate food subsidy programming for the next two years. So that provides a very basic safety net for those residents that need those services. So thank you for your support in that work. Our Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Initiatives, Tyra Smith has launched the action teams, and we expect to complete the Phase Two of the JDI audit in the next reporting period, next quarter. Infrastructure challenges continue. Among the many contracts you will see in the upcoming council agenda will be storm drainage systems and analysis and funding for storm easements. We continue sidewalks and road resurfacing projects. Just the last two weeks, we did ADA ramp work and sidewalk repairs just in Roosevelt Center. We'll have some pictures of those projects further along in our presentation. We have numerous strategic initiatives, such as the space optimization in the municipal building. We have been able to add workstations for six staff members. If you recall, part of this municipal space study was to find ways of creating more space in the building. One of the recommendations was to look for, to build a new municipal building. We're able to, we've been able to relieve, provide some relief to that seating pressure by making space optimization efforts to improve the allocation of space and allow for more seating in the building. EV infrastructure, we'll continue to focus on that, on that work. The Pepco Streetlights, as I mentioned earlier, economic development initiatives. We have quite a number of economic development initiatives, such as the CRM, which is Customer Relationship Management and Business Engagement. We've been, we've reached out to several community partners, state agency partners to host the next business conference, so we hope to announce the next business conference for January. Now, we have had numerous business development activities, and you'll hear about some of those later in the presentation. We also are planning a redesign of our website. We released an RFP, and we received over 40, 50, over 50 proposals for redesign our website. So we'll be busy reviewing those proposals. We've got numerous other projects that we received funding for, such as a cemetery master plan, the Hanover bike waste design, Division Zero, and as I mentioned earlier, the CRM system for economic development. So that's the overview. Now I will go into the individual departments and highlight some of our accomplishments. So I invite Mr. Kim to join us for the Public Works accomplishments. The first picture on your left is the inclusive playground at Buddy Attic Park. Made some HVAC upgrades in our Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center, which that picture there is just one of many. Mr. Kim, do you want to take it from there?
Yes, sir. So we continue work at Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. We installed a new HVAC system that services the main lobby. Working on recreation on resurfacing, and that's a full standing of the basketball court.
Then on the next slide.
Some work of our concrete, our miscellaneous concrete for FY 25. Pictures are primarily of Roosevelt Center.
That first picture on the left, Mr. Roberts, you and I discussed this briefly. This was the section of the art center that had that cavity underneath it, and the team looked at it, and there's just water that was running underneath it. There was no quick, there was no easy, yeah, there was no easy fix to that. It required just replacement of the whole slab.
That's correct. We took it down to hard dirt. So we took all the loose dirt out, but there was no major issues, and we lifted up the slabs.
I want to compliment you on the work on the curb cuts and the ADA ramps. Throughout the city, I've seen the work taking place, and it seems to have taken place pretty quickly. So thank you.
Yeah, really nice down lake crest as well. Very nicely done. Thank you.
We work with planning on getting some of these curb cuts here at Roosevelt Center. Kind of threw around some ideas. We think that it turned out very nice. We would have liked to do more, but obviously, money's a factor.
Right? These are improvements to our parks.
Yes. These are just some miscellaneous photos. We, you know, we also doing some, the middle photos are for the benches for the bus stop project, just some restoration work that one of our craftsmen did, and then also redoing the beds.
Done, Public Works?
Yeah, can, what, do we have a, when are the, when are the two playgrounds going to be done? Because they look like they're really close.
We're pretty much done. We did a punch list last week. We are waiting for the final inspection as well as certification.
Children are ready.
Yeah, we know.
I see them every time I'm there. They're looking in there.
Under defense, they tried it out. It seems to be okay.
Danielle has her hand up.
Yeah.
Councilmember McKinney, are you there?
I am. Just a quick question. In putting in the new playground, which looks fabulous, when we saw it during the hug walk, did you also take a look at the positioning of the lighting on that pathway that goes between Franklin Park to the backside of the rec center? I know that there had been some questions around whether or not that lighting had been positioned the right way. And I'm just thinking now that we have this beautiful playground, hopefully we'll have more people coming, and we want to make sure that they're staying safe on the way there, especially if it's getting darker earlier.
So we did look at that path lighting, and we did rotate them downwards. So we understand that it's fine now. And I believe originally they were lifted upwards because it was too bright. But hopefully it's more bright.
We want, we want the light going where it belongs, down on the ground, not up to the sky, causing light pollution.
Any additional questions?
So just so much work going on. Of course, you know, this time of the year, before it snows, before it gets too cold, a lot of the concrete work has to get done. So anything, just in the next few weeks that we're going to see?
So we'll be shifting from concrete to asphalt, so you'll start seeing asphalt going down. Our milling operations start at the end of the week. We should be done within the next two, two and a half weeks.
Sounds good. One thing, you know, with signs, there are a few areas in the city, like coming into, off of the parkway, somehow someone knocked over that wooden sign. I don't see how that happened, but there's a few areas. So is that something also we'll begin to see between now and the end of the year, some new signs and signs shifting around?
Yeah, sure. We're always working on signage. And if there's a particular sign you'd like for us to look at, we'll have to look at it.
Well, you picked that one up, I think, already, coming off the parkway, where somebody went straight towards it. I don't know how badly damaged it was, but it looked, looked pretty serious.
Okay. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Please share our compliments with your staff.
Yes, sir. Will do. Thank you.
Moving on to Human Resources, Mr. Martinez is unable to join us tonight, but some highlights are that we hired our new Economic Development Manager, which I believe you all have met and have participated in some of those activities we've done around economic development. We also hired a new Animal Services Supervisor. We changed the title to reflect market conditions and naming conventions. It used to be the Animal Control Supervisor, now it's Animal Services. It's more than rounding up animals. We are working on the Paycor HRIS integration project, and we expect to be able to roll out the payroll process in November. So that integration is going well. We had, we had set this goal to develop an electronic exit interview system to gather insights. This process is now going to be under the HRS implementation process, so that Paycor system has an exit interview tool as part of the services.
That's a huge task, that integration of the new, the Paycor and the HRIS. So just kudos to you guys for doing that. I mean, I know that that is very intensive and intense, so.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And while, while I'm reporting this under Human Resources, Finance has a significant role in there, since a lot of the data comes from, from Finance, so.
The stuff, the stuff is not as exciting as playgrounds, but this is like so important to the function of the city, so I really do appreciate it.
Thank you. You have no idea how many emails fly around when we need to make adjustments to hours and get time sheets in and whatnot. All right, now I'll invite Ms. Gaiman to come on up. We've got Finance, which I got to say, while she's coming up, it's a, you know, this, it's a beautiful budget book that's team effort, team effort, all the managers pitch in, PIO and Finance. And I hope that you appreciate the layout and, and the way the presentation, the information's presented.
You got the wonky one. You might just want to switch to another chair. Sorry. Okay, I'm ready.
So the, so the highlights we have for this reporting period is we applied and was granted the GFWA Annual Comprehensive Financial Report for the 35th consecutive year.
Whoa, 41.
Excited about that, although I was only here for four of them.
Maintaining the standard.
Yes, maintaining the standard.
You want to take over from there?
Sure, I'll take over. We also submitted the ARPA report to Treasury. This would, would, this represents the end of the year, end of '24 fiscal year. So we submit these reports on a quarterly basis, and so the one for April through June, we submitted. All of our reports are submitted on time, and I'm happy to say that because I didn't realize that Treasury was actually reporting that information out, but they are. They indicate how many entities are on time and 30 days late, 60 days late. We are always on time, so I'm happy about that.
Good.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, the next one is due September 30th, and we are, I mean, what is it, October 30th? That goes from, what, what, what? July 1 to September 30th. That's, yeah, so we're very close to submitting that one as well. We've implemented online bill pay, and we have about 40 residents using it right now, and they're using it for waste collection payments, for retirement payments, for the retiree reimbursement payments, I should say, and also for, hmm, just slipped my mind, our personal property tax. So we're excited, and folks are calling all the time, complimenting us that it's finally up and running. So I also like to just say that Ms. Pompey did the first one. She did the test for us, and so I told her she made history. She was, it was, yeah, I needed someone to test it to make sure that it worked properly and it would go all the way through and hit the city's books as it should. And she, she was nice enough to run the test for me, so thank you again.
Yeah, so sign up if you haven't. It's so nice.
Sign up, yeah, yeah.
Is it a sign up?
Very easy to sign up.
What do you have to do? Just send an email or a note?
No, you have to actually go in and actually set it up yourself, because it asks you for your personal credentials.
Of course you do.
So, yeah, so but once you do, you can schedule your payments, and it can happen automatically, or you can pay them, you know, whenever you decide to, just, just on time, please.
Less than 10 minutes.
Yeah.
To sign up.
So I'm guessing that we, how many payments do we process through non-online means on a monthly basis?
Oh, I don't have that information, but I do know that we still have folks coming to the window that, you know, make their payments. And I have to say that some of them are actually paying by credit card, using the old system. The old system was when the city was paying for it. So we are informing folks that they now have to make the, pay the fees themselves. I don't know how often that bell rings. I guess if I asked staff, they would say 100 times a day, that's not true.
Just feels like it.
It feels like it, yeah.
So does it feel, though, does it, so it seems like the system is working well, so it's something that we should definitely be advocating for people to use this system versus any of the older systems, that this is, we've, we've worked through any kinks that there might have been, and we should try to get people to switch over to this online system?
Yes, I think so. It's working extremely well, and we've, we've received a number of calls, you know, when we first launched it, so I'm, you know, we are still working out the kinks, but whatever comes up, we're able to help the residents, resident to get it paid. So they, you know, the ones who are using it seem like they're excited, so I know we're excited, so.
Some folks are just going to continue to come to the window because they enjoy doing that.
Yes.
Councilmember McKinney's got her hand up.
Yeah, quick question, Ms. Gaiman. Can you remind me, I feel like there was something when we were going through the budget where you were talking about the number of people who signed up and the actual cost of the system. Does the cost go down if we have more people sign up, or does it stay the same because we're now in a contract with that for a certain period of time?
It's probably going to stay the same, because I think the individuals who are, who were paying by credit card are still paying by credit card, it's just we're using this different system. Now, I can't say that for sure, but I can certainly run the numbers and report back to you to give you actual numbers. What I, you may be referring to is when I actually brought the, the matter before council, asking council to continue to pay the fees, which were really, really high. And I think I was estimating, based on the, on our projections, that the cost would be about $50,000 as a test case, a test year, I should say. So I'm paying attention to it. I do plan to report back, just to give you an idea of how many people are using it, I guess, in the next six months, certainly by the time we do the budget, and give you the cost as well. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. I just wanted to make sure we were looking in advance and kind of forecasting if that number that you had given us was going to change, either in a positive direction or even a negative direction.
Well, it's actually going to change, because the city is no longer paying the fees. So that, I think we had budgeted $13,000 for this effort. Now, of course, we've, we've, we've paid some of those fees, because by the time I brought the, the matter to you, a couple of months had already gone through, passed in the fiscal year. But it will, it should not reach $13,000, and it certainly will not be 50, because the city is no longer paying the fees associated with making those transactions.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've submitted the year-end 2024 financial report. I didn't bring it, but I do have it on my, my phone. So we ended the 2024 year with a surplus of $768,517, per the really, really long report I sent to council. So I give you the explanation. But I must tell you that that number will decrease as a result of the workers' comp audit. They've increased the amount that we will owe them. We didn't pay enough, so that this $768,000 will drop by almost $300,000, unfortunately. So it has to do with the fact that we implemented the, the... So it has to do with the fact that we implemented the, the, um, uh, the, the new payment, the new pay scales and all of that in, in twenty-four. That was the first year, the compensation study. So that increased, uh, that increased salaries tremendously. And then finally, we submitted the application, um, for the GF O A budget award. We are waiting the, uh, the decision, decision from them. Feeling like we will actually get it. We, we made some major changes to the budget. James and, and, uh, Chandra had some great ideas along with folks. Well, I mean, the budget book looks wonderful. And I mean, I, I think, yeah, it answered a lot of questions that GF O A had about, um, connecting council goals with, with the budget, um, with the, the annual budget. So it, it looks great and I just can't imagine them not liking it and not giving us the award.
Yeah, it looks great and it seems like, uh, with, with the new systems in place, perhaps it was actually a little bit easier to put together. And so, you know, in the future, uh, being able to, there's more flexibility in adding text and, and moving pictures around and whatnot, so.
So, so that's my report.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to note that on the GF O A standards, those have changed and they've become more stringent standards. So the, the reporting of financial information's, um, become a bit more complicated.
Hey, uh, before we go, so, uh, the, uh, digitizing the, the laser fish stuff, which has just been around for years and years. So we've managed to, you've managed to find an alternative and, and, uh, so there's an outside, uh, company actually doing that. How's that, is that working out okay?
Uh, yes, finance probably sent an additional seventy-five boxes over. And we actually have an external, um, storage area where we will need to, we have permanent files based on our retention schedule. So we have a number of, uh, uh, permanent files that will go later. I have not been to that external, um, location, but I'm told that it, it's probably a good seventy-five hundred boxes there too. So it's just a lot. And so finance have, we did a lot of purging, we continue to purge. We don't wanna, don't, we don't want to have duplicate copies of what we send over, but finance has a lot. We had the, we had the, uh, storage room downstairs in our office that's now an, an office. Also, we have files in the basement in the old jailhouse, that's what they tell me it is. I've only, I've only seen it once, but anyway, it's full of our files. So we, finance just has a lot. And so, um, the effort is to send it out to the, um, external company and they send it back to us and, uh, and, and we can look at it on the cloud and then that will be taken care of.
Right, so all that stuff that was in boxes is actually gonna be easier to find.
Yes, yes. And they were, you know, we will be able to retrieve the information based on the way it's set up, um, you know, retrieval system.
Very good, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
And moving forward, we're reducing the collection of all that paper processes by using admin systems. So I, I have, there's this great feature that I can look at the requisitions online. And if I want to see the invoice or the, the bill for it, I can just click on it and see it on my phone.
Yes, that is correct, that is correct. All of the supporting documentation is uploaded into the financial system, is attached to the invoice. The contract is attached, so that is the filing system from now on.
The only downside to it is I don't have an excuse in the middle of the night to not approve requisitions.
It's Mary Lou is.
Don't wait till the next morning. I don't think you need to be approving requisitions at two AM.
I guess that depends on who we ask. Mary Lou wants you to get it done, so. But thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Okay.
All right, next up is Public Information Officer, uh, Shonda Andrews. We, we were very busy from the minute I got here. Amongst one of the first projects, just being a recent, the new city manager, was the big FBI announcement and having this room, uh, filled with all, all kind of very important people. And since then, I think we've had a lot of media presence, uh, here in the building. So Shonda, I'll let you take it away.
Right, good evening, council. Glad to be here, um, representing public information. We've had, like, uh, uh, city manager, Summeron said, we've been very busy, but we've been managing it very well. First off, uh, strengthening relationships with Fox Five, WSA TV, DC News Now, PGCTV, leveraging all of our events and everything that's going on in the city of Greenbelt because we have a lot going on to offer our, our residents and surrounding communities. Also, within this, uh, last quarter, in the interim, while we were, uh, looking for a new economic development manager, I took up some of the duties and started the Hotel Roundtable, which led to our ad being in the Prince George's Destination Guide this year, uh, for the first time. And I'm excited about that because that book goes, it's locally, it's regional, it's international. So everyone will get to see a, a lot of what Greenbelt has to offer and select, uh, Greenbelt as a place to come and visit because we got a lot to offer. Also currently working on a certificate, certification program with E. Cornell right now. I'm in week two and so far, so good. It's, it's a short program, but, um, of course, I, I will definitely make it to the end and represent Greenbelt and, you know, use those tools to strengthen our communications with everyone that we associate with. Also, I wanted to give kudos to the team for completing the budget guide. I mean, I'm sorry, the budget book for this year is definitely a team effort, um, to get it done. Um, and the allotted timeframe, um, I'm very proud of the way that it looks and it represents the city of Greenbelt, um, making it easier for everyone to, uh, find what they're looking for, readability and where everything makes sense. Um, I'm happy about that. Since I got here, it has been my determination to, to, um, level up the communications efforts as far as like what we present to internal and external audiences. Also submitted an application, uh, for our rec guide with the Maryland Recreation Parks Association. They have a showcase award. We were selected as a finalist this year, but I'm gunning for next year, uh, because I think that our rec gr, our rec guide looks great. It's a, it's a great representation of what, what all these things that we have to offer to, uh, residents of all ages. It is, I think it's visually appealing and current and, you know, people may want to hold on to it because it looks so great as a coffee, like, you know, on the coffee table. Also, um, you know, being in communications, you cannot work alone. So I've been strengthening relationships with, um, the other municipality PIOs. So I'll reach out and, uh, run some things past them, they'll run some things past me and, you know, work together collabor, collaboratively. For example, with the fire department, I worked with, uh, uh, City of College Park and, uh, Berwyn Heights so that we have a clear, concise message, um, to all of the, the media outlets. So that's been working great and, um, looking forward to working with other municipalities in the county. And then the last thing that I have is, uh, I created or started a PIO Communications Committee with fellow staff members in the city of Greenbelt. I work, um, well, you all know that it's only two and a half of us on the PIO team. And so we heavily depend on our staff members in recreation and cares to help get the word out about the, the events. And so we have a unified voice. You all know that we do have the design standards guide, so we share that information and any other information out there that could affect our community, so.
Next one's a chart highlighting the numbers.
My, look at those numbers. Very impressive. I want to compliment you on, uh, the, the work that you've been doing. One thing that, that we received that I appreciate, uh, was, uh, I think we got a listing of Greenbelt in the news or, you know, there used to be, uh, clipping services and, you know, so you could periodically get a, uh, a listing of, uh, news articles that appeared in the press. Now, everything, I guess I'm aging myself just a little bit, but now, uh, you know. So, you know, we, these news stories get placed and we don't see them and, and you may not see them as well. So are, are we using a service? And, and we did, uh, if you could from time to time sort of share a collection of, of links and stories, that would be helpful for council so that we know how to respond. We get questions from people and, uh, at conferences and just being around, they'll say, oh, I saw this or I saw that, so.
I do have a new service, uh, that we're currently using, it's called Cision One. And it collects, um, information about the city of Greenbelt and, uh, NASA and includes that information. So I will start utilize, I started, um, but I'll continue to use it and send you out reports based on what's happening in the media for Greenbelt.
As, as a council member, I appreciate that, yeah.
And I remember the old clippings, I'm dating myself too.
I also had an internship where I used to literally clip.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Shonda, Ms. Andrews, thank you.
All right, on the economic development front, we've, uh, thank you council for your support on selecting an economic development strategic, uh, plan development partner. Uh, that's, uh, we've had our kickoff meeting, so we anticipate, uh, having a really good report to, to show council. And prior to showing the draft, we will have a retreat with council to talk about economic development and marketing strategies. So it's, I, it's, we, we thought it, it was important to have council, uh, involved in that process earlier than, once we're too far down the road, want to make sure that we're capturing your vision for the city. We have, uh, embarked on bi-monthly industry roundtables. We talked about the hotel sector. We have a few other ones lined up, medical sector roundtables that are planned, uh, for later in the year. We are planning our next quarterly business conference. We've been in touch with the, the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development for a conference to talk about, uh, the state of workforce housing and support for new housing development opportunities, uh, in the state. And this particularly in response to the governor's office, uh, providing authority to the HCD to manage the state's new market tax credits. We think that that's gonna, uh, have a significant impact on the economic growth of the state. Hearing, uh, Ms. Secretary Day speak at several conferences, their administration's belief is that lack of accessible housing, and that includes affordable housing, is a, what's, it's a barrier to our economic growth in the state. And so the administration's, uh, focused on addressing that challenge. So we, we are looking to do our part where we will have a, a conference on, on housing market. We'll be re-engaging on the, uh, customer relationship management database. We expect to launch that in December. Along with that, we'll, we will restart the city's economic development newsletter, uh, in November. And John's very involved in the numerous association events, uh, in the area. I think you've seen he's been invited to breakfast celebrations and speaking engagements. So he's out there being very active. Any questions on economic development?
Well, I know, uh, the partnership with, uh, our business alliance is very important. So, um, there was work going on just with, uh, just a directory, business directory. And that's something we allocated funds for. We had some grant funds for that a few years back. So do you know, is that coming online sometime soon?
It is online now. The Greenbelt Business Alliance Directory is online. I'll make sure you all have the URL. That was funded initially wholly funded by the National League of Cities, a National League of Cities grant. We ran into some development challenges where we needed allocate additional money and we use, uh, economic development dollars to, um, cover the, the additional website build-out cost.
So a Michael Grant, I think, from Bloomberg Philanthropies through the National League of Cities, yeah.
Their project has come along well.
So, yes, I'm.
Uh, just a comment that, um, I'm glad, and I don't know if this, this may have come up before that, but the, the medical sector, some conversation, interesting conversations about that came up at that Greenbelt Business Alliance Breakfast. I guess that was last week. Uh, the days are sort of running together at this point. So that's, that's timely that there was, there seems to be interest in that. And then, of course, we had the CCI Health, um, ribbon cutting last week as well. So that's, I'm glad to see that, to expanding some of that outreach into that sector, um, in addition to the hotel sector. So just a comment more than a question.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that recognition because we're looking at approaching our economic development strategy through a strength-based approach, looking at what assets we have, what, what are unique to Greenbelt? Where do we have, uh, resources and strength? And the, we have a very robust medical service, uh, industry that we need to, uh, cheer up and promote.
Well, and I think it's worth, with, with touting that, that the CCI Health there, they're gonna have the residency program that's very, I thi, I think the, the only one of its type at, for, at a clinic of that type to have the, the medical residency program. I'm not gonna get all the terminology quite right, but it sounded very exciting what they're going to be able to do there at that new facility, I think. Up to, eventually up to twelve residents in family medicine right there at that facility, which is awesome.
The, the work is amazing. It's the largest, the largest federally qualified clinic in the county. It's forty-eight thousand square feet. It'll, it'll have the residency component where there'll be up to twelve individuals that are doing residency and have COTS in the space to provide, provide care. In addition to that, it'll have a dental office, a pharmacy, a training center. Will provide training for medical, medical personnel, so.
Big deal.
It is a big deal. It's great that we have it in Greenbelt.
Another link in our medical mile. There you go.
All right, joining us now is Director Planning, uh, Terry Ruby.
Yes, good evening. Just jumping right in, we had some really exciting, um, grants that we applied for and received. Um, two hundred thousand dollars for the Fission Zero, uh, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for the Hanover Off-Road Bicycle Facility. So we're currently working with those grant agencies to finalize scope of projects so we can execute the grants agreement and, uh, get busy implementing those. We'll be going out to RFP, um, for both of those projects in, in the really immediate future. We'll also be going out for RFP for the Cemetery Master Plan Preservation Project as well. As council's very aware, we completed review of the, um, Maryland Consolidated Transportation Plan. That letter has been, um, submitted to the state and to our county and, uh, our local, um, neighboring jurisdictions. And staff will be attending the roadshow, um, this week as well. We've encumbered, uh, we soon will be encumbered one hundred percent of our ped bike and our, uh, ped bike improvement project, ARPA funds and our bus safety and accessibility projects. Just have a couple more contracts to bring to council. We've been working very closely, um, with the Public Works Department, who has an instrumental role in these and have already, as you saw, the picture, started them fabricating the benches and so forth and are working with us, uh, with a vendor to start building the bus shelters. So we're very excited about seeing those projects starting to get implemented over the next couple of years. Um, we oversaw the acquisition of parcel eighty-four. We did get the recorded land records, the, the deed and so forth, so that has been finalized. In terms of a code enforcement, um, we've carried out over five hundred and twenty-three inspections this quarter and issued five hundred and twenty-three licenses. Those would be residential and commercial licenses. We've investigated a total of a hundred and thirty-four complaints. Um, and that is including our, our windshield program that we, um, we implement. And then we have issued, um, eighty-six citations. The citations are for those that we've issued violations to and the, the violations were not addressed in the, in the time in which we provided to them. So they were, uh, provided a citation. If they continue to unabated, then when those citations get sent into the courts.
Sounds like you've been busy.
We've been very busy, considering, you know, two planners and myself, we've been very, very busy. Code enforcement is, you know, out there twenty-four seven during, during the week, so.
Couple, couple of things, uh, so the, uh, connecting path over at Greenbelt Station, any, any update on permitting or progress with that?
No, we, uh, the, the city manager just, uh, signed off on, if you recall, council, um, passed an ordinance or a resolution to allow us to spend up to ten thousand dollars bringing on Dewberry, the developer's consultant, so that was just executed late last week. So they are now working on, um, updating, revising our erosion sediment control and extending one of our permits. The rest really falls on staff and, and it's been a little bit challenging with this just from a resource perspective and that's getting the procurement documents, um, submitted. But we are working on this, so things are moving forward.
Okay, and, and I was talking to, uh, city manager, Summeron today, uh, and had, just had two questions. And then one, it's, it's a pet peeve, but, you know, the county and Capitol Bike Share, you know, they. they promised, they promised that they're gonna have our stations there at the Metro and over by Roosevelt. So here we are at the end of the year. So I want to, I'm gonna be trying to follow up. Have you heard anything about?
No, our last inquiry was just that they had hoped to have them done by the end of the year. So, but we can follow up again this week, see if they have, you know, changed in any schedule or anything, or schedule updates.
Was available, and they actually, they said to me, they said to us that it would happen by the end of the year, not that they had hoped. So there's that. And also, you know, with the dedication of the new facility, the beautiful building over there by the Bank of America, CCI's building, you know, the Stormwater Management Pond over there sort of highlighted. So what's, what's the latest on that? I thought, it looked like it was finished pretty much.
My understanding, it is, talking with, well, Assistant Director of Community Development, Mr. Cabrera, who's doing the inspections on that, that it's nearing completion.
Very good, very good.
It was delayed, if you know, it was supposed to be done, I think, last March. They had a lot of challenges with that, also with all the rain and so forth.
Okay, Senator.
Yeah, and I guess this, maybe this is also partially a question for Public Works, but we have these two playgrounds, and we never really did a big, an opening for the Buddy Attic Parking Lot when we finished that. So do we have plans to do an event that could be the combination opening of the parking lot and the playground, then of course, the beautiful one over at Spring Hill Lake?
Yes, I believe Mr. Vard is working with, on details for one at Spring Hill Lake, and the chief, I mean, I'm sorry, the chief. He's like, absolutely not. Mr. Kim and I will be doing, yes, a combined one for both the parking lot project and the playground. We have been discussing that. We do not have a date at this time.
Other questions? Okay.
Happy to turn it over to our birthday celebrant.
Somebody's got a birthday today?
How'd you get that in there?
Happy birthday today. Happy birthday. Oh.
All right, and now up is Chief Bowers, Police Department, who's also celebrating 35 years?
Absolutely, yes. I'm taking it.
35 years with the city of Greenville.
Should we sing?
We could, only if you start.
I would encourage you not to sing, please.
Well, happy birthday.
Oh, thank you. So a couple of the highlights for the Police Department, as we noted earlier, the portable radios that were authorized, the first half of the order is completed and actually are on the road in use now. We will be coming back for the second half. Our Criminal Investigation Section completed a number of notable investigations, including some, an incident that involved a robbery at a bank, in which they worked with the ATF to locate the suspects who had been involved in multiple incidents at banks. We hired and actually graduated from the academy six additional police officers during this quarter that were all sworn in and are finishing up their field training. Four have finished field training, and two are in the last stages of their field training. We have, working on hiring some additional candidates. We hired two police officers, one dispatcher, and our Animal Services Supervisor, Patricia Filmon, if you haven't met her yet, she's doing an outstanding job. We've attended a number of community events. Most of you have been at all of them, including National Night Out, which is kind of the highlight of the quarter for us. And then the Animal Services did the Pooch Plunge over at the pool in conjunction with Direct Department at the end of this pool season, and so that was a big event for us as well. In terms of other items, we continue to see crime trending down. Overall, crime ended the quarter down about 29% for the entire city, and that's driven predominantly by the reduction in auto thefts. And auto thefts themselves are down 56% from last year. So if you remember, last year we were at about 600, so we're down about 56% from that number right now. So we continue see, seeing crime trends going in the right direction. The one area that continues to remain elevated is in robberies, and that's up about 19% from last year. And those numbers pretty much match region and county-wide. If you look at Prince George's County, you'll see the same, same trends across the county in terms of the reduction in thefts, but robberies continue to remain a little bit of a problem for us.
Well, thank you, thank you. So I want to compliment you on the frequency of the community outreach activities, coffee with the cop at different locations, and lots of outreach is a good thing.
We've been, we were busy last quarter. We've been busy just to start this year, this particular quarter, but I think we had about a dozen events running from July into the end of September.
So two, two things. One, there's a lot of interest, you know, with the license plate readers and the cameras. How's the acquisition and implementation for those coming along?
Had a meeting this afternoon with the vendor. We did some pre-construction site surveys, marked the site location at Greenville Station Parkway, marked the site location on Cherrywood, and the second location over by Edmondson and Breeze Wood, or the third location. So we'll have those three sites. We believe cameras will be installed by the end of the second week of November. Once those three sites are up and running, we'll be able to work on some operational policies on our end, make sure we work the kinks out as we begin planning for the next three sites over off of Hanover. And then we're trying to do, use existing city infrastructure so we can reduce some costs in terms of adding poles and power grids, so then we can maybe spread out a little bit more and catch a couple of the locations.
So the plan would be to begin to expand beyond the one section of the city, you know, by the spring?
No, we're hoping to start that soon as we turn, once we get these up and operational, we'll start planning for the next three in December, with the hope of about a three-month turnaround and having those running in February.
The other new technology that people are wondering about is we've got the stop sign cameras posted in a few locations. Are you already beginning to see data coming in, photographs? Maybe Mr. Summerone's picture has popped up somewhere?
I can assure you that Mr. Summerone's vehicle will definitely not be in one of those photographs. Can't speak for everybody, but no, so we, they've been out since Friday. They'll run through the rest of this week. As you know, right now, we're just in a data gathering stage. There's no violations being issued, there's no citations going out, no warnings. We're just merely collecting data. Once we have a good grip on kind of a seven-day dataset where we feel confident that we have weekend data plus daytime data, we'll be able to kind of do some analysis and see are the sites we selected, were they problem sites? Is there an issue that we need to address? And if there is, then how's the best way to come back and address that? We'll present that information to you at a later date. And then if council wishes to proceed with the automated stop sign enforcement, we will come back to you with additional legislation and a policy and locations and a much more detailed idea where we'll go with that.
So the trailers that are out there, they're movable trailers, that's just for testing purposes, and ultimately, if council decides, you know, instead, if we decide to move forward with this, there will be permanent installations as opposed to being on a trailer?
That's correct. So the trailers that are out are just for data gathering only, should the decision be made to move forward on a permanent basis. Most of them would be fixed sites. We could still use a trailer deployment, but what we would have to do is designate intersections that would be subjected to potential enforcement. And then every, you know, we put it out, have to issue warnings for 30 days, and then you could issue citations. And if you chose to move it to another location, you'd issue warnings and then citations. But if you went back to location one, you wouldn't have to issue warnings the second time through. So don't, you have to issue warnings the first time at each location, but then subsequent relocation back to your original sites, you would not. So that is another possibility to use a more mobile system. Some of the things we do need to do, we have to make sure that we're within the school zones and handle all that bit of the backend legislation.
Senator?
Well, and that's what I was gonna ask, because there have been a plethora of suggestions of intersections that need the stop sign enforcement, but I think unfortunately, many of them are not actually within school zones. So I don't know, this might be something, I don't know if Terry, do we have a map of where the school zones are? Just because I think that will be helpful to respond to residents when they say, well, why can't we do this intersection to know, well, this is the area where the school goes in, that's where we're legally allowed to put them.
In the legislation itself, it specifies within a half mile of a school. So if you just measure out on Google Maps within a half mile of a school, if you're within that radius, it's about 2,200 feet, I think, on Google Maps is, will give you, my math should be about correct, gives you a half mile. So if you're within that 2,200 feet of the school property, then you're within a half mile circle of it, so.
That's just, so it's really just a circle half mile, it's not half mile along the roads or anything like that.
Not railway, it's air miles.
Strictly half mile, as the crow flies, as they say.
Yep.
That encompasses a pretty large part of the city, actually, so.
It does and doesn't, it, there.
Few spots.
There's a lot of spots that it doesn't include, but it does.
I don't have a school near me.
Should we, should we create a school of the world famous utility pole to extend the, to extend the range around there?
If we added schools, then, you know, you have to make school zones. I mean, that's one of the things that has to be addressed in the moving forward part is what is a school zone in the city?
So we can decide for ourselves what we consider a school zone. It doesn't have to be, because, you know, the county has signs up in some places.
The county has signs, so we have to designate school zones.
We would have to designate our own.
Yes, ma'am.
But they have to be within.
Half mile.
Half mile radius. Got it, okay.
Chief Bowers, what a better way to spend one's birthday than actually reporting out on these.
Absolutely. I always enjoy it.
We can have you back at the next meeting.
I will be back at the next meeting.
Thank you, happy with that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next, we'll discuss recreations, and Greg Varda will come on up. Welcome, Greg.
Hello.
Welcome.
Dive right in. So Buddy Attic Park Master Plan, brought that before you, the draft plan before you last Wednesday. We should have the, my hope is to have the, the plan in front of council end of November, early December, hopefully. This next council meeting will have the pavilions, pavilion contract in front of council for approval. We've made some great improvements over at Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. Right now, the gym floor is getting resurfaced, and the, obviously, the outdoor play area is almost done. We have a ribbon cutting scheduled for November 2nd for the outdoor play area, and we'll get council that information as soon as we nail down a time and everything else, but you can put that on your calendar. This past summer, we completed the dance studio annex. As you know, we have a very robust dance program, and we really needed that second dance studio to help with some of the overflow. So that was an ARPA project that we completed. We have a lot of fall programs going on. We took our next learn-to-earn applications came in this past couple of months. We had 33 applications. Unfortunately, we probably can't take all 33. We had a lot of non-residents included in that, so we're gonna go through them and make sure we serve the residents first and see where we end up there. We had a great summer camp program, very hot, but we made it through the summer. We brought back circus camp. It was a mainstay about 10 years ago, so it was back for two sessions this past summer, and I believe they're looking to do more sessions next summer. Museum, the GHI Board-approved 10A project, so we'll be working to get that started. We got to go through some permits, work with planning. And we, all of our programs, we evaluate them when they're over, and one of the big ones that we do is our inclusion program. And we did some really good things this past summer to train our staff better and to meet with parents and the families, or the families of the inclusion participant before camp starts, so we could learn more about them, so they can have a successful time. So that really helped out, but we'll evaluate and we'll make some changes on that as well. And then Artful Afternoons are taking place over at Spring Hill Lake Recreation Center. We've expanded over there, and this is just the first quarter, so there's more to come. So stay tuned. Yep.
Council member?
I just wanted to mention that the program that Mr. Varda was talking about, the Enhanced Summer Camp Inclusion Program, actually won an award, a Maryland Municipal League Award for its, you know, innovation and ease of replication across the state. So congratulations on that. That's a, that's a big deal, so.
We're very proud of that, yes. And I'll say too, I mean, I've worked here for over 25 years, and I can say the interdepartmental collaboration and communication, I believe, has never been better. I work with all these guys to get these things done, and we couldn't do any of this stuff without their help. So appreciate that, yep.
Yeah, I mean, there's just so many things going on in the city. So kind of looking forward with the American Rescue Plan funding and the impact on some of our facilities. Give us a quick update, just with the fields of, you know, Brayden Field, the rehabilitation of the fields there, Shrum Hills Park, and then also the work that's gonna take place at the Aquatic and Fitness Center.
I can give you the update on the fields. We, I should be getting the three biggest quotes in this week, I hope, for regrading, irrigation and sodding the play area, fencing and improved lighting on Brayden Field. I should be getting those quotes this week. They're all sourced well, which means that they're ratable contracts. So once I get those quotes in, that'll kind of give me an idea of how much money we have left and what other amenities we can add to those projects. As for the pool, I'll turn that over to the city manager or Mr. Kim.
Thank you, Greg. The pool, we're still evaluating the, not the scope of the work, we're entering actively into the contract engagement phase, where we have requested the engineer estimates. I believe those came in, or they're coming in, they're in, and that gives us a good, a good measure against the quotes that we have received. The other piece that's holding the work up is, as council recalls, we were, we were fine-tuning our strategy. We figured that the repairs of the pool that could be covered by the program Open Space Funding, and that would free up ARPA money that could be reallocated to other projects. I spoke with the mayor today. We looked together, we looked at the agenda for the Board of Public Works. We have not been put on the agenda yet. I know the mayor reached out to his contacts at the Board of Public Works, and their schedule was not provided. So we, the project is not on the agenda for approval. We have every expectation that we're gonna make it there. Otherwise, I'll have another headache around ARPA projects. But the expectation is we'll make it to the Board of Public Works and have that project approved for $1.5 million, and we can move forward with the construction work.
That's what, we'll get there. So just as far as looking forward in the next quarter with the fields and fencing off and the re-sodding, and that's gonna take place over the winter, over the next three, four months?
I don't, my understanding is the sodding will probably take place next, next spring. I don't think they can lay sod in the wintertime, but I think they're looking at that next March, April to start that.
Okay, so the field will not be, won't be in use next summer?
Yeah, it'll probably be down next summer, yeah.
And same goes for Shrum Hills?
Same goes for Shrum Hills, the same, hopefully, the same contractor will be doing Shrum Hills and Brayden. Brayden, the only, the only play area getting revamped at Brayden is the infield of the baseball field. And then the, the overlaying football field will be improving that in-house with the new equipment that was purchased with some of the ARPA money, yeah.
Okay, and you're, the expectations of some of those activities, will they shift temporarily over to Northway Field or maybe to the field that's over there off of Mandan?
Well, I know the football program is partnering with Beltsville right now, and they've been using their fields. Soccer is usually at New Carrollton. So in Little League, you know, they have said, look, we'll do whatever you need us to do, we just want to have a better field to play on, so we'll, we'll work with them to find them another location.
Thanks for that update, really appreciate it.
Problem.
Lot of work.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to recognize Greg and Brian Kim, that we have three big projects that are gonna affect recreations in a way that hasn't in a long time, and that's our trailer projects at the community center. The cooling system needs an upgrade. The timing of it, we will look to bring that contract to council soon. There's a long. There's a long lead time for that project. The team is, is, has figured out a way to maintain the cooling apparatus and the cooling systems up and running over the next cooling system, the next cooling season, and we hope to make that upgrade after the next cooling system because of the long lead time on equipment. So that'll be a major project. The pool deck, as you all are aware, will be several months that the pool, indoor pool will need to be closed, and we're working through those, through those details. And the third one is the, the fields. So a lot of big projects affecting recreation and its users.
Yeah, I recall when we went on the tour with Mr. Kim, him mentioning that like, if you want to replace the chillers, you have to, it's like years in advance, you have to start planning it out.
Right, right. And one of the challenges were the changing requirements for refrigerants, that we were, we were looking to do the project as the EPA was in the process of changing the refrigerants that were acceptable to use in these systems.
So some transformational projects.
Yeah, and, you know, once we, once we know the specifics on the, the pool timing, you know, our, our goal will be to open the outdoor pool earlier and to keep it open longer. That's what, you know, maybe opening it in beginning of May and keep it, keeping it open through the end of September. So that would be great if the project can be done in that timeframe, but we'll see.
Okay. Hey, thank, thank you for all of your work.
I mean, it was like seven, it was seventy eight degrees today. Today would have been actually not a bad day to be at the pool.
Just don't, you know, still know what you're going to get in, you know, September, sometimes in October. Yep.
Okay. Let's see, we're, we're making some great progress here.
Yes, we are.
Let's, I don't see any questions online from the public, but I do see a hand in the room. Please.
Mr. Orleans.
Du Orleans Green Belt. I have a whole bunch of questions. I think we went past the twenty minute mark for recognizing public comment. Beginning on page two, although they're not numbered. The tenants' meeting at Franklin Park, when was that? And had that been noticed? I should say, I know very few people by name who reside in Franklin Park, but I have been there on a number of occasions, soliciting the interest of the tenants there, and I certainly would have liked to have known about that, as I believe others would have. When was that?
I don't want to speak on the date. I would have to look that up and get that date to you.
Were notes made of that session?
It's not our, it's not a public meeting for council.
The city organized that, or Franklin Park itself?
There, there were two meetings. One was organized by the chief and myself as part of our, our community engagement and outreach program, and the second one, we were invited as part of the Franklin Park management team to join their tenant association meeting.
I'm sorry. Maybe I'm misunderstanding the focus of everything. What, it was not with regard to tenants' issues that meetings with tenants were had? If it was police issues or community issues beyond that, then I might not have been as interested, although I hope that it was a fine meeting. But the question, my question is, it directs, would be directed to whether or not tenants' issues were discussed, in which case I very much would like to know if notes were had, were kept and see those notes.
There are no minutes from that meeting, but tenants' issues were discussed.
That's the meeting that was organized by Franklin Park.
Correct.
Yeah.
The Franklin Park meeting.
Are there future such meetings scheduled?
Not that I'm aware of, but I think it would be reasonable to believe that there'd be future meetings scheduled on those topic.
Scheduled in the future, will public notice be, be made?
No, public notices are not required for those meetings, as they're not our meetings.
On the third page, has phase two of the JDI audit, it suggests here it's been completed, been published? Because I don't remember seeing the phase two audit.
I, I, I'm sorry. Say that again?
The third page, the fifth bullet, Justice Equity Diversity and Inclusion Initiative, lost action teams and completed phase two of the JDI audit. I know that they've had focus groups recently as part of phase two. I'm not aware that they completed any audit or report to the city based on those meetings.
That's, that's a maximum observation, Mr. Mr. Orleans. That is a past tense. That should be a future tense to complete. I think my, my grammarly acted up on that one and used the past tense of the.
Was the computer.
I believe in the MBOs, it talks about the, that Tribasi will complete the report before the end of their contract on, in December. I think that's noted in the longer, not in the presentation, but in the longer MBOs.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. That is correct. And it's also noted in the, in a future slide, looking at diversity, equity and inclusion.
There was an, an initialism or an acronym that was referred to, I believe it was human resources, although I'm not seeing it on this page. It might be in my notes. CRM. I was just curious what CRM is.
Customer Relationship Management System.
And that was human resources?
No, that is a, it can be used as a human resource function, but in this context, we're referring to the system that we will use to track engagements with the businesses and the city.
With regard to the Public Information Office, I am not now, nor will I ever be, on social media. I'm just curious if all the postings to Facebook, X, Instagram, LinkedIn are also conveyed to the people on the email list, or are these separate postings?
Usually the, the platforms allow for different functions, so you can take a, so if you look at our, our social media engagement, we're on Facebook, X formerly known as Twitter, Instagram and LinkedIn. Instagram does not allow the number of characters that are allowed in the email format. So some of these cross posting, we have some cross posting challenges, as the different systems do not allow for all that content to be able to cross post it. Another example will be the X platform. That's, I believe, is a hundred and thirty characters. One forty characters, so. And our emails are quite lengthy, and you could barely manage to squeeze in a sentence in a, in a, in a Twitter.
I appreciate that distinction. I guess I was thinking, is anything that's posted on these social, so-called social media outlets or platforms or programs, whatever they are, also conveyed to the subscribers in an email form? Yes?
No, no, because if you look at the subscriber base of social media, subscribers is almost half of what it is in the emails. So the, there would be two things would need to be true for, for order that, and for that statement to be true, and that is that subscribers on social media would have to also be subscribed to, to email. We had to make the assumption that they would, all those subscribers be equally subscribed against, across all the platforms, which, just looking at the numbers, is not the case.
Hey, is it council's will to, to allow Mr. Orleans some additional time?
No.
Not really.
I have two more.
It's council's will to just, you can ask another question later, but I think we need to move on. We need to move on. But thank you.
Next up is our cares department, and Dr. Liz Park has, has joined us tonight, so.
Hello, good evening. So as you can see, we cares as part of the opioid restitution fund plan, and so I've been working with the grants manager and assistant city manager to come up with that plan of how the city will be able to utilize those funds. They have to be related in some way, right, to opioids or to prevention of substance use disorders. So working on a plan that allows, again, an interdepartmental approach where AEDs are, where the AEDs are, we would have Narcan available also and have those facilities there, care staff providing the mental health services to folks who need that, the police department and their DARE program being part of it, and their crisis intervention team. And then, as we were just talking about the social media, having a social media campaign about opioid prevention, and so it's kind of a combined plan that the money can be spent on over time. So we're still coming up with the final pieces of that and how the budget will look, but we've been very involved in helping develop that plan, working to really develop our partnerships with the schools to make sure we're meeting their needs. As you know, we do the food distributions, we do the diaper distributions, the back to school health fairs and things to try and make sure that folks have the resources they need for kids to do well in school. Also working with Spring Hill Lake Elementary to develop a Hispanic parent support group to offer that, those parents some extra support in their community, making sure they're connected to the resources in Green Belt, know about them. Now that we have Spanish speaking counselors that can work directly with them, we've definitely seen an increase in the number of families coming in for services that are Spanish speaking. So we've been very happy to increase that partnership. And then also working with Green Belt Middle School to, with their community school, to advance some initiatives there to bring more resources to parents and families there. Over the summer, we did a coding and AI program that was very well received over at Spring Hill Lake Recreation Clubhouse, where youth got to learn about AI and how to do coding. Very engaged group, and they, it was a great class, and the kids really enjoyed it. And then we just continued to do a lot of community engagement events. The Taste of Green Belt, it was the first time, I think, that happened over at the Spring Hill Lake Rec Center, and people loved it. It was just different cultural foods, and my staff was there providing resources and being part of that. We participated in National Night Out, and again, trying to make that community outreach, making sure that folks throughout the community know about the many different resources. People often say to me, oh, we didn't even know Green Belt Cares was there, or that you guys offered these things. So we're often having to make sure people even know about our programs and what's available. And then the back to school health fair that we do in August to make sure students have those resources, and I really give a shout out to the staff that put that together. They not only give out backpacks, they have somebody there to take school photos, to offer haircuts and get hair done to get ready for school. So just trying to meet some of those needs that can be very expensive for families and to make sure kids are all feeling ready to go back to school. Yep.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Park. In addition to all these things, we have the, the two monthly food distributions program and other supportive services that are provided.
Hey, just for our information, how, how much was the settlement for?
So I think at this point, the number we're seeing is about four hundred and five thousand, but not all the settlements have come in. And then we have, I think it's over five years to spend those funds.
Yeah, I remember when the issue came up, and we had a lively discussion about whether or not to participate in the class action suit, so.
I'm glad we did.
Glad we did. Yeah. The other question that I had was about outreach. You know, we're doing a lot of, you know, things with the elementary school and the middle school. But I'm wondering, so many of our students in the eastern part of town attend Magnolia School. It's just outside of Green Belt, but from what I can see, about half of the population is from Green Belt East. So are there some ways that we can engage with the principal and the stags and try and extend some services to our students who are attending school there?
Sure, I, we do certainly receive referrals from them for mental health services and those types of things. But I certainly can reach back out to her. We'll see her, the ACE PTA president's meeting is tomorrow night, and then in January, we'll have the principals' meeting. So that's often when we hear from principals what their needs are.
Okay. What time is that meeting tomorrow?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. That's here?
It's via Zoom, because the PTA presidents, we, we get a bigger turnout if we do it via Zoom.
That makes good sense, yeah.
They're busy people.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Um, we have, we have a resident question online.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and promote them?
Stephanie?
It's probably Stephanie O'Shea. Yes, Stephanie, are you there?
She has permissioned.
Stephanie, are you there?
A mistaken hand raise.
Stephanie, are you there?
Might have been an accidental hand raise.
Okay. High five. Thank you for all the work you're doing. Yeah.
Thank you. All right, now information technology, so acting IT director Brian Kennel. Well, Brian jumps into the accomplishment. I just, I want to recognize his work to helping us transition the, the IT department from a nuts and bolts to be more of an enabling technology, helping us do our jobs better. And it's happening now, it's at a different level. We have the OneDrive integration in our system, so we moved our folks to the OneDrive, and folks now have access to their files on their multiple devices, and that's, that's certainly been a, a game changer for me and integration of SharePoint and other technologies. Things as simple as moving the Wi-Fi hotspots, I'm sorry, the access points to more central strategic locations have made a difference.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'll jump right in here. We streamlined our Amazon business invoicing throughout all departments with workflows now. People are using credit cards, and we wanted to move to an invoicing structure, and we've streamlined that, and there's workflows where there's approvals by department heads or whoever approves their purchases. So we moved all that over recently. Some of you may or may not know with the police radios, we were the first city to go over the INET fiber, the CNET fiber, and we worked closely with Motorola, excuse me, and the CNET engineers over the years to make that connection available. Then Bowie and some other cities went along with that also. And we test with them all the time. We recently upgraded that equipment, so our connection would stay up. So, and this year, we budgeted to add thirty new accounts for Public Works to give all Mr. Kim's employees email access, as well as the rest of the city, so they can all communicate better with everybody now. So it was a nice upgrade. We have a lot of technology in the police cars, and with some turnover at police and in IT, we had to revamp how everything works together. And we also had the in-car cameras put in, so we went through that whole setup and how to upgrade a police cruiser or migrate it to a new police cruiser, and we revamped that whole rollout, basically. So that's much better off than it was. And lastly, we completed the FBI audit, IT security with Ricken's people. So that was a good success.
I got a couple of, a couple of questions. You talked, you mentioned CNET, and I was going to ask about the transition. There, there had been something called the INET system, which was a partnership between the municipalities and the library systems, and that, that provided the, the wire broadband connections to these institutional users. So, and that was going away, or it's gone away?
It's rebranded as CNET. It's the INET. CNET is, I'm not even sure which one to call it half the time, because people refer to it back and forth. CNET now, yeah.
Okay, so that transition is, is, okay, we're not, so we, we own more of it, I think, as, I mean, the users, instead of it being something that's provided to everybody through the county instead, it's, it's the resource that we kind of have a little bit more ownership of. Is that correct?
We, the, yes and no. So we do have, the CNET is a, it's a, it's a partnership with the municipalities. There's talk about, right now, the backbone is, is being supported by Comcast, and there's talk about, in a few years, Comcast just going away, and that the municipalities, we need to make a decision of whether that is outsourced or we acquire it and continue to support ourselves.
Yeah, we, and we just renegotiated the ten-year franchise agreement, and part of one of the ARPA projects was running fire between most of our buildings to get us off the Comcast fiber. So that's a way to transition away from it, because we're going to have to eventually.
That's kind of what I was asking about.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
Yeah, the other thing, you know, with cybersecurity and all of the emails is our email. The number of accounts expands, there's more and more users. So as a council member, I appreciated the training that, that we received on dealing with phishing and spam and whatnot. So I'm just wondering, in, in general, with as far as training opportunities for users, is, are there more modules available? is, are there more modules available for people in Public Works or on council or in the police department to kind of become more knowledgeable about the technology so that we can protect ourselves better against cyber attacks?
Sure. No before is our cybersecurity awareness and training. In Public Works, we added their new accounts, and now they have that access available. They didn't have that before, half of them probably. But as you go through the training, if you pass, you get less training. If you aren't doing as well, you get more training. It's built that way.
Greg? Happy to report that everyone here knows how to treat an email that comes from you asking for gift cards.
That's right.
Got a weird one this weekend from Hosway. From a different phone number, so I had to verify that it was actually his phone number asking about building access. And it was, of course.
Tells you that they're in a meeting, but they need a favor from you.
Yes, Emma, can you just stop sending those emails to me?
Okay, okay. Hey, other question? Yeah, please.
I just wanted to compliment you on the work that you're doing. I think that a lot of the, you know, a lot of the work you do is kind of the invisible work of the city, but it's so important to just making sure that everything works for, across the entire city, throughout all the departments. So, thank you for all these upgrades that you did. Thanks for all the work that you're doing, and yeah, just keep it up. Great job.
Okay. Appreciate you. Thank you so much.
All right, now we'll talk about grants. In the last reporting period, we have received awards for 11 additional grants submitted in the fiscal year 2024. That brings the total award amount for the year to $2.17 million. And yes, good work.
And Carrie is online, by the way.
Thank you. The city submitted three grant requests totaling $1.63 million, and we are now registered for the IRS First Federal Direct Tax Credit Program, which is something that a number of you have sent information on, and we've participated in training and are looking to file those applications.
So, any questions or comments? I think Ms. Yurie is doing an excellent job of kind of hitting, she hit the ground running, and then I guess she's been on board now for a little bit more than a year? About a year? Less than a year?
Almost two.
Almost two.
Almost two.
In September.
Yeah, so we can, in a very tangible way, we're seeing the benefits of your work, so keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we will transition to diversity, equity, and inclusion, and we'll have our DEI Officer, Tyra Smith, come on up. We've made a lot of great strides in our Jedi work.
Good evening. Okay, so, the last quarterly update, we had just completed with Phase One, and I did a presentation for council just to go over an all-staff learning journey and some goals that we were going to do to address some of the things that were in the audit. So, one of those goals was to create a Jedi Action Team, which we have done. We have representation from almost every department on the team, where we've undergone some trainings with Tribussy, some additional trainings that we did to kind of connect DEI to our work. And then we have just completed creating a draft vision statement and definitions for justice, equity, diversity, and inclusion, along with a preamble to tie all of those things together. So, that, those concepts, those definitions will essentially serve as our guiding lens for how we do our programs and services for the community. So, right now, we have planned town halls. Our first one will be next week with employees to introduce these terms in the vision statement to get feedback. Also, we'll do three in-person, and I'll probably do maybe like one or two virtual. And then we will do some outreach to the community to get community feedback, and I'll bring them to you all to get your feedback, and we can finalize the definitions. So, Phase Two is underway. Tribussy did kind of similar process. We had a structural review. They pulled some documents in how our most like outward-facing departments engage with the community, so they did a review of that. And then, of course, the focus groups and some of the community pop-up events that we went to. So, we should have some high-level findings on that by the end of this month, and then we'll get on calendar to do a presentation for council. And, let's see, oh, yes, the all-staff learning journey. So, our senior leadership team has completed the first learning journey, well, the first training on there for emotional intelligence. And beginning next month, it will be available to all of our employees to register for, and we will be introducing that at the town hall next week.
So, there's a town hall next week?
Yes.
And where's that going to be?
At the Greenbelt Cinema.
But it's for, it's a staff town hall, not a public town hall.
Yes.
Thank you.
And that's all I have.
I'd just like to say thank you. I have spoken to, without breaking any blinds, some people on the action teams, and I know that certain issues have come up in those, in those meetings that have really, really helped them feel better about their work environment. So, thank you for taking the action.
Thank you.
Okay, other questions or comments? You very much.
Of course.
All right. We're near the end, near the end. Unless you want me to keep going, we can. Keep going. All right, finally, a personnel update, open positions. We're actively interviewing for the second, sorry, the third animal service officer position. The constituent service coordinator position, we're in the second round of recruitment. We opened that up again to get a larger pool of candidates to consider. The human resource generalist, this was a new position that was approved by council with the, the unexpected absences we've had in the, in the department. We've hired, we needed to hire temporary staff members, so we've quickly backfilled a position with temporary support to keep the work going. The update on recruitment efforts, we continue to do our multi-channel outreach. With the new HRIS system, we will be able to do recruitment across 70 different job platforms. So, with the click of one button, we'll be able to release announcements across these multiple job boards. And that brings me to, to the end now, to take questions. I, I hope that you, you find the summaries the useful here. A lot of the work that we presented today are work that we're intentionally sharing with council as part of our weekly report, and this, this quarterly report allows us to bring it all together, because we put a lot of, a lot in these weekly reports, and this is an opportunity to get all of that count, content, numerous weeks of work into an hour and a half, two-hour session.
Appreciate that. But you know, it's, it's not just council, it's, it's the public. So, this is, this is a way of actually communicating a lot of that work, because you know, a lot of folks just are not able to access or read the weekly reports, so by putting together a quarterly, summerly, and I appreciate, you know, all of you, because I know it takes quite a bit of effort, but it's really not so much about council as it is just making sure that the information is available for people, and they can either watch or read, and it's, it's really a communication tool. So, I, I really appreciate and know how much work it is, but it's important.
Oh, I appreciate it. I appreciate the citizens who will stop me and say, "I read in your report X, Y, and Z," and so, I know it's getting read.
Any other questions? We got a question, Mr. Orleans.
I have a few more, although it doesn't directly write to the report tonight from the chief, from the chief. I, I can recall that on two occasions recently, a request, informal request as it was, was made for a listing in the indication of the funding of the various technological improvements that the police department has obtained. And I'm sort of curious to know still if that, if a report on that list and the funding of that list is forthcoming. Jumping ahead to Cares, which was the other one I had from before, even though we hadn't yet got to Dr. Park, just a thought in passing, that because I can incorporate a coding and AI program for teenagers, I think would be a good thing for adults in town, too. I know I would benefit from it, because I know nothing about coding, so I would request that maybe an adult program could be made available as well. I noted, although I still don't know her name, and I've never met her, the grants coordinator was attending virtually tonight. It's impressive, these four bullet points. Apparently, there is something that's written down, a grant, goals, policies, and procedures. I would very much like to see that. I've been wanting to meet with her, not just as an individual, but in a public session, to ask some questions about some of the potential grants that I'm aware of. I presume our community planning director is also aware of them. It's possibly highly unlikely that Greenbelt would qualify for Reconnecting Communities Grant, which is much in the news.
Billions!
Billions and billions of dollars. But there's an old idea that Crescent Road could be extended across Kennelworth Avenue and essentially cut through the middle of Franklin Park and serve as a more direct connector road, and being identified as Crescent Park Extended, a more connecting road and connection to the residents of Franklin Park as residents of Greenbelt. Nothing ever was known with that suggestion, and it may be that we would not qualify for such a grant from DUT on that, but it's worth exploring. But that's just an example. I, I happen to see potential grants available, and I presume many other Greenbelters, many more than I would, many other Greenbelters see potential grants, and it would be great for there to be a community meeting, one to meet with her, since I've never met her, but also to talk generally about what Greenbelters know as to the possibility of potential grants or not. I look forward to it. Thank you very much.
Hey, thank you, thank you. So, this question comes up pretty often. We've got some smart people who live throughout the city and folks that are very in, in touch with federal and state entities that are grant-making entities. And I know that our grant coordinator has compiled a massive database of grant opportunities, and there's actually a team, I guess, a grant development team that sort of assesses whether the feasibility of going ahead. So, some of the federal opportunities that you've mentioned, connecting across, that's something that we've looked at carefully, and we're not in a position to respond to the last funding cycle. So, I'm going to make the suggestion, if someone has an idea about a grant opportunity, you can always send it to a council member, and we will forward it to the administration. Mayor Protem?
Well, I think that Reconnecting Communities Grant, if I remember correctly, it came up at a Four Cities Meeting that I think maybe State Highway applied for it for something related to Greenbelt Road, and it was not, did not get it. So, that was a much larger entity than just Greenbelt applying for that, and I don't know the details, but I do remember that being mentioned, that, that it would have included part of Greenbelt if it was Greenbelt Road, but it was, it was not something we were applying for that we would have benefited from, but it was not accepted for the grant. So, that's one that, yeah, might be worth pursuing again, but, but there was an attempt made for something in the Greenbelt area, and the federal government did not choose to fund that particular project.
We're, we're very aware of the Infrastructure Reduction Act, the funding opportunities that are out there, and we're looking at them. So, I'm just glad that, you know, you can see the results of having a full-time grant coordinator writing and looking at these opportunities and working with the staff, because I mean, there are more opportunities than we can respond to.
Absolutely. I, I want to stress that. I, I feel incredibly honored that we have so many people that want to help us, want to work with us, want to do work for us and with us. The challenge I, I come across is that while many of these projects are worthy pursuits, worth of time and the investment to pursue them, there's a capacity issue on our end to be able to, one, write up the proposals, but then be in, be able to carry out the projects. That's just on a, on a labor perspective. And then there are the matching dollar requirements that many of the other projects required. There are other projects that we don't have a chance to even apply because we haven't done some of the, some of the legwork, whether for a reconnecting communities or a GRACE grants, we need NEPA, we need cost-benefit analysis of the, of the projects, so there's engineering work that needs to be done ahead of time. And now, we're getting, we're, we're being proactive and looking at the long-term strategy of our projects, and council was very supportive of the administration finding money to do the Vision Zero Plan, and we're excited to have secure funding to do that work. And once we complete that Vision Zero Plan, that's going to allow us to be more competitive for some of these reconnecting communities and other transportation projects.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, council, are there any other comments about the, the materials submitted by the city manager for this update? Are there any other general questions for the city manager at this time? Because we're, we're going to go into an executive session in a little bit and talk about some other issues. Did you have an information item?
I do not. There were two other questions posed by Mr. Orleans. It's the interesting idea on the coding and AI for adults and seniors on the, you know, we'll take that under advisement, the report on technology purchases for the police department. We publish those in, in, in multiple ways. One is the, the list of vendors that council approves every year, and that outlines the vendors and what we're purchasing from them. So, the body in one camera, other technology firms are in there in the contracts and their dollar amounts. So, that information is already published, it's available. And then the others are, we, we're really good at listing the contracts that our council are going to approve, whether that's through the consent agenda or the regular agenda, and that information is publicly available.
Very good, very good. Hey, one thing, you know, we've been talking ARPA, ARPA, ARPA for such a long time, and to see all of these projects come to fruition, it's, it's a powerful thing. And at some point, not in the next quarter, but over the next year, maybe we can set up some sort of an ARPA tour to actually kind of look at, at these projects so people can see. I mean, we're documenting it online, but as these projects are completed, at some point, it might be interesting to, to put together some sort of a tour of the, the various projects, capital projects in particular that have been funded.
Sounds like a great idea. Would that be a walking tour or bicycle tour?
It could be a bicycle tour. It could be a walking tour. It could be a hybrid. How's that sound? Okay. Hey, well, let's go ahead and move into our next area of business, which would be going into an executive session. So, thank you.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you for all of your work. Happy birthday to Chief Powers. Happy birthday. Hope you got the flowers.
You're going to take them all now to get a coffee and a donut, or what are you going to do now?
If anybody wants to meet me at Dunkin', yeah.
Mayor Protem, what do you got?
Well, I think we need to go into an open special meeting first, right?
I hereby call this special meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKenney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Here.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Ms. Weaver?
Here.
Mayor Jordan?
Here.
Okay. If there are no additional information items, could, could you please make a motion to go into an executive session?
Mr. Salmorone, would it just be, is there anyone else joining us for the closed session? Just, okay, okay. I move that council go into closed session in accordance with Sections 3-305B1 and 8 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of the Public General Laws of Maryland, one, to discuss the appointment, performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom this public body has jurisdiction, and the other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals, and two, to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation.
Go ahead, go ahead.
The purpose of this meeting is, one, to address personnel matters over which this public body has jurisdiction, and two, to consult with staff about pending or potential litigation. In addition to council, City Manager Salmorone will be in the closed session. Note that council will not return to open session following this closed session.
Second.
Okay, Ms. Pope is seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. McKenney?
Yes.
Ms. Pompey?
Yes.
Ms. Pope?
Yes.
Ms. Niesel?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes. Okay, the time, according to that clock, is... Okay, the time, according to that clock, is 17 minutes after 9:00.
9:20.
9:20, according to my computer.
Anybody need to take a quick bio break?
How are we going to do the Zoom room? Should we just lock the meeting and kick everybody out?
Lock the meeting, and we'll leave the microphones and the screens up, so if you can leave.